May twenty first regular meeting.
I want to meet with the United States of America and freedom of the public which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Dr. Cruz.
Here.
Mrs. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Crum and Arthur.
Here.
Mrs. Crum and Arthur.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
And Michelle. Mr. Basil.
Here.
Ms. Noch.
Here.
Okay, are they just the patrons signed up? Hey. Remember this will limit you to five minutes and please state your your address for everyone to hear. First one is Nora from Bochok.
Do you have some feedback?
No, as long as everybody can hear you, it's fine.
Wow. Good evening. My name's Nora Bocheck and I reside at four seventy nine Ridge Road, East things, which is Sesskland Township. Just want to say a few words. My daughter graduates this Friday evening and I've been actively involved with this district for thirteen years. Throughout that time, I have consistently heard one major concern raised by staff, and that is the lack of consistency in leadership. In the time I've been involved with the district, we have had six for attendance, six in thirteen years. Tonight, there's a motion to post an advertiser superintendent whose term will begin July first, twenty twenty five. However, on the April sixteenth, a motion was passed to enter into negotiations with the current superintendent for a contract to start in July first, twenty twenty five. How can the board, and I know I'm asking this rhetorically, I'm not asking for an answer. How can the board negotiate in good faith when they are soliciting other candidates for the job? It is considered bargaining in bad faith if there is no intention of reaching an agreement or following through or negotiated commitment. According to the Harvard Law School, such behavior is inconsiderate, immoral, and even potentially illegal at best. All that being said, I wonder what the impetus is behind actions being taken against the superintendent. According to her evaluation, her overall score was three point six one out of five, which is defined as commendable. Dr. Fasonic arrived in the chaos of a building project and worked diligently to do what she felt was in the best interest of students, staff, and community. Is that a problem? She was and still is in favor of the building consolidation. It certainly appears that way to those looking from the outside. Are you aware that under her leadership, curriculum mapping was completed? This provides consistency and growth from grade to grade. Safety and security issues have been identified, addressed, and enhanced. The high school course catalog has been updated, bringing more AP courses onboard and introducing the Penn Highlands Associates and High School Program to our district. She resurrected staff committees to keep all stakeholders invested in the development of the district. Dr. Fasonic has worked endlessly with our administrative team, staff, and a myriad of mental health providers to address the social emotional well-being of our students. She has created an extensive tracking list to ensure all deadlines are met. The mechanism not only prevents missed deadlines but improves efficiency throughout the district. Dr. Fasonic is a Northern Cambria alum who demonstrates her commitment to our students and community with her active participation and attendance of virtually all events. Dr. Fasonic has thirty seven years in education and is by far the most knowledgeable person in this room when it comes to running a school district. She deserves respect for her knowledge. Some on this board have been in position for five months and in my opinion would benefit from getting to know Dr. Fasonic personally. I encourage you to reach out to Dr. Fasonic and those that work with her on a daily basis to ensure that you have not been prejudiced by the angst of last year's events or other people's biased opinions. You may have heard one side of the story, but we all know there's more than one side. Please take time to hear all sides. The district deserves a committed leader, and I believe Dr. Fasonic is such. Decisions regarding the future of our district should not be made out of spite or vindictiveness, but out of a true desire to make our district the very best that it can be. Additional note. Could you please use your microphones so that everyone can hear everything and the desire transparency that has been stated is maintained? Lastly, I would like to express my utmost gratitude to the entire staff of the Northern Cambria School District for providing my daughter with an amazing educational experience. Thank you. Thank you.
Brian Waksmanski.
Okay, my name is Diane Waksmanski on six twenty two Municipal Road. I live in Sesskland Township. Um, to try to piggyback onto what Nora Bochok has just said, I might start off kind of jerky because I'm going to skip a part of what I was going to say. As a local governing board under the Political Subdivision for Claims Act, you have immunity. There's the, you know, the page you can print from Google if you would like to do that. It says Political Subdivision for Claims Act is the protection certain legal actions by the doctrine of sovereign immunity while local political units are protected by governmental immunity by the Political Subdivision for Claims Act. We have no attorney here, but I'm sure he has dealt with it a thousand times. The reason I bring that up is because I just happened to be at the right place at the right time when there was a legal opinion being given by an attorney in Cambria County on this very issue. And so he goes on to add, so long as a board is acting within the scope of their function as a board member and not in intentional or negligent manner, they will have this same immunity applied to them as applied to other public offices. He goes on to say, to be clear, this does not mean that someone could not be sued by an individual, but so long as the individual on the board was acting in good faith and without malice, that person would then be under the assistance of the local agency. So, as all of you are well aware, when you go to court, it can go either way and you can lose. So my point of this brief explanation of the law is that if you are, if there is anything going on and by the agenda this time, there last time there was a a motion to start negotiations and have the contract with the superintendent opened as per the law. And the superintendent could also apply. The second motion was that negotiations would begin and they would continue to July first, twenty twenty five. If that has not happened, then good faith and without malice have already been violated, in my opinion, and, you know, everyone could always find out in court. The other thing I would like to bring up to try to end on a positive note. Last time I was here, I suggested, and I know it fell on deaf ears, but to have some folks join Facebook. You can, you can streamline it so you don't get a lot of garbage and people don't have to talk to you. You could block people and you can hide people, but I have been so entertained and loved every minute of the last month of May. I have watched, I have watched academic ceremonies, I have watched award ceremonies, I've seen all kinds of kids and some of them are here tonight, get all kinds of awards. I have run out of emojis that say, well done and congratulations. Because I keep trying to switch them out, not to use the same one over and over. I have loved every minute of it and these are our kids. And if you're not on Facebook congratulating them and it's Northern Cambria sites. Okay, it's not my site, it's not his site, it's Northern Cambria. I mean, that's that's like phenomenal for me. And, you know, it was the first annual alumni concert. It was the first jazz concert in like ten years. And then there was the band concert and I forget which one I missed. But we had the elementary music folk teacher and the middle school music teacher and Dr. Fasonic as part of the band. And we had Paul Walker back at one of the concerts directing and then he attended the other ones.
Diane, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay.
Thanks.
And it is just phenomenal that all of this goes on in our school and it is such a positive thing for all of our children. And so I think everyone needs to take a bow because twenty twenty four has been really tough. And the best thing I saw was a video of the vacuaria. And I would just like to take one second to, you know, congratulate, you know, the ministerium and who all was there under Reverend Martin. It brought tears to my eyes. It was done so beautifully. Thank you.
Thank you. Based in recognition.
Lots to be proud of. We are going to start with Ty Dunn. Come on down, Ty. I actually have two for Ty. He received the All Gazette Boys Basketball Player of the Year and he is our district champion in the hurdles. Hannah here tonight, Hannah Crook. Hi Hannah, come on up. I'm just so impressed with Hannah and her artistic abilities. So she received the Young Artist Exhibition Achievement Award. That was at the Cambria County. I think it was Bottle Works. Bottle Works, so congratulations. And she's also an illustrator for a book.
No, I'm not. That was Lydia.
That was Lydia. I'm still proud of you anyway. But I do have another one for you Hannah, so. She made it to the National History Day competition. Congratulations. How about Delilah? Name. Delilah here or Ava? Missy? Ava's not. Well, they took first place in the structural engineering at the TSA competition, so congratulations to those ladies. And they'll be heading states in Florida this year, correct? Nate Fry. Nate was also named to our All Gazette Boys Basketball Team, so we're very proud of Nate. Congratulations. We had a team from the high school participate in what was called the SEAL Challenge, Sea, Air, and Land Challenge at Penn State Altoona. And they won the challenge. So Aiden Seifer, Kevin Keat, and Kiada DeRosa. Kida. Kida. Thank you. Kida, I'll say it again, Kida DeRosa. So please call me that. That's all right, Kida. My husband's taking his Basil and they've called him Basil this whole way. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And your Aiden.
Kevin. Kevin is not here.
Kevin is not here, but Aiden, congratulations. Thank you. Ava also took first place in Senior Solar Sprint at the TSA and is Ben. Ben's here. Ben, Ace, and Drake. This was our senior solar sprint team. Congratulations. I'm very glad. Ace, Drake. Congratulations, Drake. Thank you for making our school proud. We're so happy. We have had an incredible month and many things to be proud of. We are a small school, but we have such great things happening and I would have to repeat the sentiment. We have a great, fantastic staff, fantastic administration, and your children are receiving a premier education. We can definitely say we provide that here at Northern Cambria, so congratulations, everyone.
Okay, superintendent's report.
A quick report from me, just in case you don't know, the last day of school dismissal times. Middle school will be at nine AM. The high school will be at nine ten and the elementary will be at ten AM. I know all calls have been going out, but I thought I would just mention it and that's all I have for my report.
Financial report.
The monthly financial report for April, the beginning cash balance was one hundred thirty six thousand, four hundred sixty nine dollars in our FNB general fund. We got a grand total of two million, one hundred fifty two thousand dollars in receipts and disbursements and transfers out were two million, one hundred sixty thousand. Leaves us with an ending cash balance in the FNB account of three hundred twenty nine thousand, two hundred twenty seven dollars. We also had twelve hundred dollars in our athletic account. The high school activities account is forty five thousand, two hundred fifty three dollars. The elementary activities is thirteen thousand, three hundred seventy two. Cafeteria is eleven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. The capital reserve account is twenty two thousand, eighty six dollars. And the money market for the capital reserve is five thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Again, those are all funds at FNB. We have our investments at Pliggett for the month of April. In our general fund, we, our ending balance in the Pliggett was two million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred thirty four dollars. Our capital reserve account was two million, five hundred fifty nine thousand, eight oh one. Our athletic fund was a hundred thirty five thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars. And then we have the two bond, series bonds that we financed or borrowed for the high school project. The twenty twenty two bond balance is nine million, four hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty one dollars invested. And the twenty twenty three bonds, there's nine million, seven hundred sixty two thousand, one hundred and seventy three dollars invested. So the grand total of all funds at Pliggett at the end of April, twenty four thousand, I'm sorry, twenty four million, seven hundred twenty six thousand, four hundred and eighty one dollars. The in investments earned interest over the month of April did the amount of thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. And year to date for the nine months of this fiscal year from July first through April the thirtieth, our total interest earnings at Pliggett for all funds was six hundred and fifty six thousand, seven hundred and sixty seven dollars. Dick.
Thank you, sir. A minute approval. Be resolved the minutes of the April second, two thousand twenty fourth committee of the whole meeting and April sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. Regular meeting are approved as presented. Are you motion for that? Mr. Jim Zenshaw. Do you second like?
Yeah.
Second, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, Treasury and Finance's report be resolved. The Treasury and Financial reports from April two thousand twenty four be approved as presented or amended, received, and filed. Motion, Mrs. Mark Primnocker. Second, Mrs. Norman Crook. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, I'm guessing we need this executive session, correct?
We have issues dealing with personnel and contracts.
So be resolved, Word of Education moves to executive session to discuss personnel and contracts at six twenty one PM. First, Mr. Norman Crook. Second, Mrs. Carol Eave. Any questions or comments?
Kevin.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention before you guys leave that I have, as I typically do of any one of the board members asks for any information. It was later today, so I didn't have time to email it, so I made a copy and put it on each of your desks for a recording, um, the maintenance of the issue.
Okay.
So that is just breakdown that you guys can discuss.
Thank you, sir. Any questions on that desk? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order at seven fifty five. Be resolved, the Board of Education resumes the May twenty first, two thousand twenty four regular meeting at seven fifty five PM. Any questions or comments? I'll make the motion. Hello, Mrs. Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna try to go through this as quick as we can because we have a lot of voting items today. So we can make our questions and comments to the point if we can. That'd be great. I'm sure with tight logic and Hank would appreciate that also. So we'll go, Mr. Dian Roman's report. Uh, see, it says that we have eight hundred and seven kids in our district right now as opposed to it last year at eight thirty three, one seventy nine IDA, twenty one gifted as opposed to one ninety four nineteen gifted. Seventy one in Votech as opposed to sixty five of last year. So we'll go into the action agenda, buildings and grounds cafeteria.
Okay. Item A. Building project update. Discuss any updates on the building project and architects report. Thank you.
I will be brief. Since the last update, the the found, the casons have all been installed now. The electric is switched over, the gray beams are scheduled to be finished by the end of this week. Things are going well with the addition. That's, that's, the majority of the work has been focused out there. They're also grading the back hill for where the new parking lot is still to go.
Dave, do you have anything to add?
No, I think I can get it all, but Steel's ordered, Steel will be here on the seventeenth of June, starting directly in June.
Nobody have any questions? Questions? Yeah, okay. Um. I guess that that took care of B also. Okay. Item C, door hardware. Be it resolved, the Board of Education discussed, to discuss and authorize the purchase of door hardware for a construction project from Hardware Specialties of Dubois LLC. The cost to the district will be two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars. Attachment one to the agenda.
First, Mr. Jim Zenshaw. Second, Mr. Daniel Hoover. Questions or comments? Yeah, okay. Jen, you get to go first since you made the motion.
Um, I don't know if Dave can answer this or not, but if this is connected with him. If this question is having to pass to see if it will be on the set or will it be very high set?
We are real close right now, it's in the stuff as a ten, twelve week lead time. And then ten or twelve weeks that puts us right in August.
Thank you.
Mike, or PJ, go ahead.
My question is, I know that it happens from time to time, but would that being a significant amount of money, that's what my understanding is of why it's been an issue of passing. Would that be something that was missed by site logic or by architecture?
So thi- this was, there's been some, some misinformation or misunderstandings about all, this was not missed. This from day one was designed to be something that would be done after the project. It was never meant to be bid because we're not replacing the hardware in your entire building and we need this new hardware to work flawlessly with your existing hardware and with the public.
Not to cut you off, Hank, but did we have like a soft cost or an estimate of what it was gonna cost us?
We did, and that's, that I, I said at a previous meeting, that, that is on me because I thought the cost would be two hundred thousand dollars, but I, I don't think I ever communicated that well enough to the board and I think that's where the issue lies, that, that this was always designed to be this way. I always expected it to be a two hundred thousand dollar number, but I don't think I did my job well enough in letting the board know that it was a two hundred thousand dollar number.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. Pete, go ahead.
I just wanna add that I will take some responsibility in the fact that when I presented the information to the board, I was under the impression from day one that the only soft costs that were yet to be paid from the day I did my first presentation were those that I listed and those you know, architect fees, permits, you know, the whole list that was there. I was not aware that those door, that door hardware was not part of the original project or regional things. So the numbers that were presented to the board did not include that. Doesn't mean that they weren't thought about or in there. I didn't know that it wasn't included in the twenty five million dollar bid and I did not add it into the additional cost that I listed as soft cost. So that's where it was. The board wasn't presented with the proper numbers. They are in there now budgeted for, but at the time that that original information was presented, I wasn't aware that it was.
And I'm, could say that I'm, I have to take a little bit of blame as well because I knew it was part of that, but I didn't catch that it wasn't in your part as well, but there was nothing intentional. It was, we knew that this was going to happen, but it got missed.
Yeah, the only thing I'm gonna say that I think I brought up a couple meetings normally discuss aside that. I thought I attended the majority of the building meetings and stuff to say all. As I tell my kids, all you never rarely apply. But I, I will say, I don't recall us necessarily talking about lots being separate. The only I'll say is, we talked about a budget for soft cost around five percent, which probably put it around a million dollars, I'm guessing. So whether it was supposed to be included, again, I just don't think I specifically recall building logs and hardware being part of soft cost and I think us as a board have always thought that that's part of the physical building, so I don't know why it would be part of soft cost. So I have to say that it was like a thought to me as much as probably most of the members did. We're now adding this as a soft cost. Again, I think we probably maybe have a budget enough for soft cost when we looked at what we originally thought to be around five percent of the project cost, but I, I just, I, I don't know why I'm not recalling that conversation, but I had to look back at some of the estimates I had about myself. That's really how I was calling.
Very much.
I mean, my little problem with this is that we hired, like, logic as a project manager to be, you know, responsible for, you know, kind of being in charge of the money aspect of this project, you know, what is going on. And I, I don't know why it should fall back on the school the whole time, like the whole amount.
Because those meetings a year, a year ago for sign logic got involved with the project.
We
About doors and hope.
We had asked, I mean, I don't know, I was not on the board at the time, but I know Mrs. Cruz had asked, like, logic numerous times. We had asked, I mean, I don't know, I was not on the board at the time, but I know Mrs. Krug had asked, like, logic numerous times, do you think you have enough time to do this project, um, as quickly as it's going through, and the answer was yes, every time.
Yes, but those negotiations were with the vendor, with the district.
I understand that.
We never, we've never talked to the lender, we don't do that.
Okay, anybody else? Roll call.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Dr. Krug?
A very, very, very reluctant, yes.
Um, Mrs. Krug?
My goal has to be now, they contract for many days.
Ms. Dr. Krimenacher?
No.
Mrs. Krimenacher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Shell?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinchak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, door hardware safety items. Be it resolved, Board of Education to discuss and authorize the purchase of a security option at additional cost of eight thousand five hundred and sixty, or twenty-six dollars, attachment two. I'll make a motion.
First one, Mrs. Carol Eave. Second one, Mr. Daniel Hoover, questions or comments? Go, Daniel.
Um, Hank or Dave, can you guys explain again the utility of this addition to our door system?
So, so this, um, and Dave, I didn't chime, chime in if I missed something on this, but this this piece is an, an additional safety item in the event of an intruder or something along those lines, where the, the new addition doors will have magnetic hold opens that will allow the doors to be propped open during the day, but if the, if, if the tru- intruder button is pressed, they will shut automatically, instead of having to have a teacher come out and close a door that is propped open. And the other, other added benefit to this is a daily benefit where the teachers won't have to prop their doors open, they can be held open electronically, you know, magnetically, so that the teachers don't have to open and close the doors at each change in period like the kids into their rows.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Um, would you say that this is a hardware that most schools that are being renovated or updated or newly built, uh, this is something that technology needs to do?
Yes, this, this is something that, that is relatively new in the, in the school realm, but, but schools that are going through full renovations and, and doing new schools, this is something that, that is typically done.
Is it a necessity?
It is not a necessity.
Okay.
I've heard it called a forward-thinking addition. Is it truly a forward-thinking addition, given how fast technology has been changing?
Well, I would say you're, this is cutting technology here, this is
Right now, today.
The greatest thing, and it also helps, if I could just say, that if a teacher or the district wants to close that wing in, in the evening, they don't want people just roaming around, you can do that as well.
But it's not a necessity.
It's not a necessity.
But I, I can just say one other thing, that if this was a full blown remodel, remodel of the whole school, we probably would have pushed to have this done without the whole screen.
It is, however, a safety enhancement, it makes the school, the school safer, it makes the kids safer. It allows control at one point for the locking of all doors.
Yes, in, in the addition, but so the, the existing part of the building where we're not doing things to the doors, this feature would not be there, if you, it can be, you could at a later date, add that feature to those doors. If you decided at a later date to add that feature to every door, if you don't do it tonight, you could do it to every door in the future. The difference is that doing it now, the walls, the walls are open and it's, it's easier to do.
So it's a cost savings to do it now, if they're going to do it.
If you were ever going to do it, i- it's a cost savings to do it now, if you were never going to do it, it's obviously not a cost. Go ahead.
I mean, we're really concerned about safety and having armed police in the school, and I think that it would be contrary to everything we've talked about, to not do everything we can to enhance safety for eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay, PJ, go ahead.
Um, what is the upkeep or expect, expectancy of like a lock like this, ten years, fifteen years?
They, these are, all these, all these locks and all of these systems are, are heavy-duty commercial systems, they, they don't carry a twenty-year warranty, but there's, there's nothing to think that they they won't last that long, there will be maintenance involved with them, but, but they should last.
Okay, roll call.
Dr. Krug?
No.
Mrs. Krug, no, Mr. Krimenacher?
No.
Mrs. Krimenacher?
Yes, so.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mr. Shell?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item E, breakfast cart, uh, excuse me, cafeteria breakfast cart. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves the purchase of a breakfast cart for the middle school from Trimark at a cost of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, with the school breakfast expansion grant received by the district, the total grant is nine thousand dollars, and the remaining money will be used to purchase an iPad.
First one, Mr. Daniel Hoover. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments? All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Item F, seamless summer food program. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes Northern Cambria School District to operate a summer food service program at the Northern Cambria High School, eight thirteen thirty-fifth Street, Northern Cambria, P A, one five seven one four. Weekdays, August fifth through August sixteenth, from eleven A M to twelve.
First one, Mrs. Carol Eave. Second one, Mr. Norman Krug. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
That it? Business and Finance.
Coal and heating oil bids, uh. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the coal and heating oil bids as follows. Friday Gas and Oil Incorporated, Weedville, P A, negative point zero one five markup on day of delivery, Penn Keystone Coal Company, L L C, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents lost per ton.
First one, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher. Second one, Mrs. Norman Krug, questions or comments? Go ahead, Daniel.
And this, uh, the call that we were talking about last time, that is better for the auger, or am I talking about the wrong thing? Like, we had a lot.
This is a call that's, that's not considered dry on delivery. And I ran some numbers, and if we were to go with that higher pole, we're talking probably a minimum, and again, we don't know how much we're gonna use on an annual basis, but all in average, we're probably talking fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars more for the, than what's in the pole. My opinion, again, I'm not a maintenance person, but I think we could possibly look at buying our pole earlier in the year, while it's hot outside, while it's athletic, you know, somewhere, this year might be difficult because of the work that's going on, but uh, I think the building back there that we're using now pretty much exclusively for salt to be used to house the pole. Um, the salt that we use, yeah, it has to be dry, but I think it's a lot easier to tart the salt as much as we use and keep the pole inside of their buildings as we can, the problem is there's only one end, so as you dump it in, you're gonna have the newest stuff to go on, but I just think that the cost is, is gonna be a little bit too much for us to handle when you go with the more expensive one.
James, go ahead.
It'll be something that we could, uh, maybe negotiate with the borough to, um, know the data uh, a fee. Have them store our, our salt, and maybe just use the for the, for the pole, and then whenever we need salt, they'll get it solved.
Yeah, that's something that they would have, you know, work out with the, the maintenance director, and, but I don't think that would be a problem, and again, I don't think that the, the quantity of salt that we need to keep throughout the winter is building a truckload at a time, and we can certainly buy parts to keep that covered, it's gonna be more of a pain than being able to go to building, but I think if you're looking at the whole picture, it's, it would be more beneficial to try to keep that pole undercover, and even if we had to buy another addition to that grade or that ground building in the back that front, there, put an extension on it to, uh, to pick up our pole in there.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, are you gonna move from the building into the coal, to coal mine?
Or, or the, uh, back of the angler? Yeah, that's how they do it now, so.
That's what I'm, oh, so they, we dump it outs, we dump it outside?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my, that's one of my questions.
Okay, well, and so we're, we're saying to go with the, um, uh, Friday gas and oil coal, but how?
No, no, Friday gas and oil is the heating ore.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two separate items, so Friday gas and oil, they, their bid was a penny and a half under the market price per gallon of the oil that we order on the day that we work, they were the lowest bid on, on heating ore.
Heating well, so you're saying that, um.
Heating well is, that's definitely the, the low bid. Penn Keystone is the low bid on the pole, the question was whether or not the district wanted to spend more money on having dry pole delivery. And I'm saying that budgetarily, another fifteen thousand dollars is gonna be difficult, and I think there are a lot of ways in using that pole, and it is, has caused some issues, it is wet. However, I think we, we can look at some additional ways, even if we, if we thought it buy it a little bit earlier in the year, before we, you know, it gets shipped up on barges in the middle of winter or whatever.
So you're saying if we take delivery of it earlier and store it properly?
Right, but again, I know that might be a little bit of an issue this year because of all that's going on, and I bought at the high school for this year, we, I would say we would have room there, now the high school, we can typically store more in that building up there, we would just, we should probably, the best thing to do is wait till the people come by and fill those high spore bins up, you know. And again, that, that's a maintenance department issue that they would have to decide upon, but I, I think we've upgraded our augers, we've upgraded our, our system for the furnaces that can handle the cold, it's just that we've been getting somewhat cold, so.
So just to be clear, it starts out wet at this price? And if we store it, it won't get any wet?
It's not necessarily wet at this price.
Okay.
He's saying, the guy that bid us a higher amount, is telling us he has onsite storage where he gets his pole, and it's sitting there prob- probably for three to four months undercover.
Okay.
He has a two-sided huge, the barges go right in there, and he unloads it, and he's saying that the time that it's sitting there and it leaves, it's rotten, it's not wet from transport, it's not wet from whatever, so is, he's telling us whole that's undercover. This is not undercover, this could be on stockpile, and it's sitting out in the torrential downpour for a week. So, again, if, I think if we try to look how we order our, our pole, bring it in and, and store it somehow, cover it with a tarp, it, it's a money thing, I, I just, you know, I, I don't know that the additional minimum fifteen thousand dollars it's going, is, is worth getting this dry pole, to try to do something.
But it could dry out and store it properly?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, if we bought our pole in July, it's probably already dropped, or mostly dropped. We stored here, and it's gonna have four months at least to sit without you know, we tar it or put it in the building.
He just, the numbers that it costs to fix and change the auger were very high, and that's just my, I'm not, I don't know anything.
And, and I do think that there were some issues with aiding the fires, checking on the fires, I think we were, a span of, there was some span of time there where there wasn't people watching over the furnaces as often as there should be possibly, so that aids into that issue.
All right, since there's a lot of questions, we're gonna do roll call.
Mr. Krimenacher?
Yes.
Mrs. Krimenacher?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Shell?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Dr. Krug?
Yes.
Mrs. Krug?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wrestling mat, be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts the highest bid received for the wrestling mats from Chelsea Rainish in the amount of five hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. I'll make that motion.
First one, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher. Second one, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher. Any questions or comments on that, all in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries.
P S B A Health and Wear Welfare Fund Group Dental and Vision Programs. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the P S B A Health and Wear Welfare Fund Group Dental and Vision Programs, providing benefits for employees of the Northern Cambria School District. Dental, July first, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-five, one year. Vision, July first, twenty-four through Ju- June thirtieth, twenty-six, two years, um, I'll make that motion.
First one, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments? All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five paper bid. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following bids for paper from the Appalachia I U O A Crawford Bidding Program. Liberty Paper Dual Purpose White Paper, thirty dollars and eighty-two cents per carton. Lynda Meyer Monroe Colored and Specialty, Specialty Size Paper, at a cumulative price they've needed, I'll make that motion again.
First one, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher. Second one, Mrs. Carol Eave. Questions or comments? Can I ask why that, the price of five grand wasn't put on the front page? Is it, is it a variable price for that, is that the reason, or?
What's that?
Any appendix that said it's around five thousand some dollars for that, that item right there, is that, why wasn't it put on front pages, five thousand something? Is it because we may not use that much, or?
For the paper?
Yeah, yeah, in, in appendix three, the cumulative price was five thousand something and change. I just wonder why it wasn't added here, I didn't know if it was because it was a variable price, or or if it, it might go up or down.
Yeah, like, we're asking for those prior to this, each year we go with some company to, to do.
I understand it, but it, it gave us a price in the appendix, I'm just wondering why it wasn't put on the front page.
Oh, I don't, I don't have that here, I don't know what that was.
Okay, it's just a, it's a question, that's all.
It was, may I?
Yes, please.
It was the colored paper and the specialty sized paper, so we would only be purchasing it if it's required in our district. They gave us that bid. That's why it's as needed, we don't always buy colored paper.
Okay, that was my question, why?
We buy minimum, minimum wanted.
Okay, okay, that was my question, alright. Alright, uh, all in favor? Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Combustion Service and Equipment, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the bill for combustion service and equipment for parts and repairs done to the tri fuel unit in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents, I'll make that motion.
First one, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher. Second one, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher, anybody? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Combustion Service and Equipment, be it resolved, Board of Education approves the bill for combustion service and equipment removal and replacement of the defective pusher rod and shoes on the C N B tri tri fuel boiler in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ten cents, so. I'll make that motion.
First one, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Proposed budget change. Be it resolved, the Board of Education votes to move the new budget pass May seventh, twenty-four, fund number ten, general fund, account number three, six thirty-five, meals refreshments. Seven thousand five hundred dollars into account number one hundred, professional serve salaries. Fund number ten of the general fund to help pay for the district employee salaries. This will leave two thousand dollars in meals and refreshments, account number six thirty-five, and the new budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. I'll make that motion.
First, Mrs. Mark Krimenhocker. Second, Mr. Jerry Krimenhocker. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Mike.
I was I was just curious with the, I mean, is that because the. We don't need as much meals and refreshments. We're gonna need to know. I mean. Just try to get a person with those.
That was an item where I asked Goldman where it was typical. If a if a line item went up three times in one year. That was the line item I was asking about. So I just made the motion that be able to put towards our staff salaries. Instead of refreshments for us and whatever. That's all I did. I don't need refreshments in a board. I just don't need it. So uh that was my thing. Just put it towards our staff, our our employee salaries instead of food.
Can I?
Yep.
I I did share with the board that this is not just food for the board. Uh, there were quite a few other things that it included. Um, and so I did share that and this year. Our total cost is only up to six thousand dollars. So we spent eight hundred and twenty-six dollars in emergency kit. That was the one day we had a lockdown. And we realized that we did not have. Any snacks for any kids, no water, no nothing if we had diabetics in the classroom. So we felt that we needed to do that. Um, as I did, I shared the other items that we had. Um, the majority of the money does come for staff appreciation. And when I divided out, the amount we spent was about thirty dollars per staff member. Whether that was uh something at the uh. In-service days, donuts, a breakfast, something like that. So I would request that. Uh, instead of moving it all the way down to two thousand, if we could keep it at six thousand. If the board would do that, that would be helpful.
The way the motion is written, it indicates that it's multiple choice salaries. How are we getting, I mean, how are we? How why would we do that with everybody's salary reset?
Salaries are set. I mean, you can always adjust the budget to add additional monies into salaries, but.
I mean, if we're projecting that we're gonna hide, we have that in the budget already, right? And we have current salaries in the budget already, right?
Correct. I mean, it it's just a basic question. So.
Uh, Peter, in. In your opinion here, has this number ever changed? Or affected or? What's that? Uh, with these, if those answers went up periodically two or three times each year. Would it ever affect our budgets where it's gonna affect the budget? A- a- again, I I mean, we've never operated on such a fine line that we were. You know, bought by three thousand dollars or four thousand. And again, what 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 the board has to understand is is that. I I, you know, there are, you know, the different superintendents, different administration comes in and they have different plans or different ideas as to how to treat the staff. So, you know, there's those that may think because you're in a public school system that the employees don't deserve. You know, a show of appreciation once in a while or a job well done. Prior superintendents maybe didn't do that. That's why the numbers have gone up somewhat. And again, you know, it's it it's a preference to what the board would like and what the the superintendent. So do we have to spend money on half day to days? No. But I think even though we're a public entity, I think employees working for a school system or municipality or. Salt oil deserve to have some acknowledgement of. Doing a good job. And I think that's what we're not. My Jen, Jen, Jen. Two thousand or six thousand doesn't change our day to day operations. Right, has.
No.
Okay.
Jen, go ahead.
Um, don't don't worry. Can you just clarify again? If we take it down to two thousand, we have enough. Money to provide our staff. With. You know, if we have it at day to day, we need to harvest of that. We do, we do, you know, whatever. Will we have enough money to take care of that or will we have?
No, if it's at two thousand, uh, I won't be able to do that at all. And I would like to clarify that there is no cost for the board snacks. The food for the board is in lieu of the appreciation dinner that uh food services provides for you in December. So instead of having a big meal in December, they agreed to give you snacks throughout that. So no, I wouldn't be able to do anything for in-service days. And as I said, I did figure it out. Per person, it comes out to about thirty dollars because I include all the staff. That includes teachers, maintenance, custodial. Administrators, secretaries, everyone. So I would have to cut that. But if that's what the board chooses, then that's what we'll do.
Yeah, go ahead, Warner.
All the years in the past that came from superintendent is what is not accounted for in our.
Now, we. When when that money would come out, it would have been listed as refreshments or. Or whatever. When you say it comes out of superintendent's budget. Fifty fifty, you know, there could be a separate line item that says superintendent. Uh, refreshments or whatever. You know, the dollar figures have gone up. There's no question there. Whether or not four years ago that was coded under superintendent's as refreshment or school board refreshment. It's still coming out of our Jared.
Daniel, go ahead.
Um. Do we have enough money in the budget to cover salaries?
As it states stated. With the listing of the people that we have. And those that we budgeted, yes. So I budgeted and we do our budget for payable. Our payable system automatically knows what next step each person is going through. So every teacher is listed. Their step is is increased by whatever their step is supposed to be. The administrator is the same way. The audit people the same way. It's all based on what the contract says. So yes, that's in there. However. If if the board decides to hire three new teachers. No, I didn't budget three new teachers. I budgeted for the people that are here. Projected to what Dr. Sonic felt we needed. And projected salaries for positions that need filled. We don't always know if we're gonna fill a teacher position with a. Thirty-eight thousand dollar person or fifty-four thousand dollars. I usually err into the higher dollar. Should we have that much talent? But that doesn't mean that the board wouldn't come in and work and and hire a step six teacher, which would be more than what was budgeted.
Kevin, just.
Yeah.
One more for comments, but all. Be laborious. So Laura, just to clarify, you you thought that four thousand would have been enough in the account or?
Six thousand.
Oh, six thousand, four thousand more than you, okay.
Um, or even, like I said, I four thousand, if that's what you want me to work with.
Oh, no, I I just wanted, I could, so you're saying four thousand more than the six thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, roll call.
Miss Mrs. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Shell?
No.
Mr. Basil?
No.
Miss Zinchak?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, she said no.
Okay. Mrs. Hoover?
No.
Dr. Krug?
Yes.
Mrs. Krug?
Yes.
Mr. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Flashing carries.
Anybody else? Anything else? Say Community Relations, Hope Fire Company uses facilities waiver of fees. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the request of Cat Patrisco. On behalf of the Hope Fire Company to use the elementary middle school kitchen and waive the fees for their annual turkey dinner on Sunday, July seventh, two thousand twenty-four, from seven AM to three PM. I will make that motion. Also, second, Mr. Jerry Krimenhocker. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
As she carries.
Okay, that's all I have. Curriculum instruction.
I am an extended cylinder E S Y. Be it resolved, the Board of Education occurs to sell in the evening if I am in sort of extended cylinder program during the month of July twenty twenty-four. At the way they needed in the N C A contract, this all is. Please send students receiving to be landing services received for hours for these long services, all others receiving up to sixteen hours. Have a knowledge of the four day hours of students, Danny Hoover, come to the D A hours of students, for the D A's head to the D A hours of students, for the nine A M of the D A hours of students. We're here to work and to the D A hours of students. And the next to the D A hours of institutions.
I'm gonna do a motion for their door, sir. Second, Mr. Mike Basil. Is that right, man?
Yes.
Yeah. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Anything else? Legislation policy development, health and safety plan review. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the updated district's health and safety plan as per appendix number four. I'll make the motion.
I'm gonna.
Second, Miss Laura Krimenhocker. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
As she carries.
Treasurer, be resolved, Board of Education appoints blank as treasurer beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thousand through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, according to board policy zero zero five organization. Mike, you wanna keep it?
Sure.
Okay, Mike Basil. Okay, be resolved, Board of Education appoints Mike Basil. As the treasurer beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, according to board policy zero zero five organization. I'll make the motion. Second, Mrs. Norma Krug. Anybody have a problem with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
That's all I have. Personnel.
Personages. Be resolved. And we learn this with the. The unanimous vote, twenty twenty-four, two twenty-two, from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Regular meeting, the Board of Education authorizes to immediately post and advertise for the position of superintendent. His term begins July first of twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion. First, Mr. Jerry Krimenhocker. Second, Mrs. Jen Zentchak. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Jen.
Uh, I just wanted to remind everyone that we have already passed a motion back in April to entering negotiations with Dr. Sonic. And I would like the full truth to immediately be passed and begin the search committee. Uh, sorry, let me track that. Not the search committee, the negotiating committee and talk about.
Um, TJ, I think you first.
Yes, I would also just like to be on the record. Um, my vote will be strictly for contract language.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, just again, just I don't wanna be laborious, I'll do it again like I always say, but again, I think I don't think it would be right to vote. To uh begin labor uh negotiations with Laura for contract negotiation, that is, and then also be advertising for a position. I think anybody could say that. If they're in the job and they knew that their employer was uh actively advertising for while they're trying to negotiate, I don't think that would call it good faith negotiations. So I I think it would be best. I think in the environment available now to. Uh. Good faith, continue with the board as a board voted for to uh begin those negotiations and. Hold off on advertising until we uh see how they'll do in China.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mr. Shell?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
No.
Miss Zinchak?
No.
Mrs. Hoover?
No.
Dr. Krug?
Yes.
Mrs. Krug?
Yes.
Mr. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next.
Maintenance supervisor. Be it resolved, the Board of Education hires Jess Smith as the maintenance supervisor at a salary of sixty thousand beginning June of twenty twenty-four.
June one?
Soon as he can be released.
Okay, okay, that's nice. I'll make that. First, Mr. Jerry Krimenhocker. Second, Mr. Jen Zentchak. Questions or comments? Right, Jen.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure that we have our plans in mind. Um, all that from us.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Shell?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mr. Zinchak, Miss Zinchak, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Mrs. Hoover?
No.
Mrs. Krug, or I'm sorry, Dr. Krug?
Yes.
Mrs. Krug?
Yes.
Mr. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't see summer, yeah, privacy, summer maintenance order. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves hiring of the fellow summer maintenance workers this summer beginning on June third, twenty twenty-four through the end of August, twenty twenty-four. Abigail Holtz. Chrissy Honor. Isaac. I'll make that.
First, Mr. Jerry Krimenhocker. Second, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments?
Hi.
Go ahead.
I don't know whether the motion's state dollar figure. I mean, it's it was nine dollars an hour last year. So.
Maybe we should put that in. I think that's a good catch. Should we vote last year's, like you said? Okay, give me read that with the with the.
Be it resolved, Board of Education approves the hiring of all. All summer maintenance workers this summer, beginning June third, twenty twenty-four through the end of August, twenty twenty-four, at a rate of nine dollars an hour.
Good, thank you. Still make the motion, Gary?
Yep.
Second, anybody you mind still?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody comment on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Leave without pay. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the request of employee thirty-two ninety-five for leave without pay for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Uh, retroactive to April fourth, twenty twenty-four. I'll make that motion.
First, Mr. Jerry Krimenhocker.
Second.
Second, Mr. Mark, Mrs. Mark Krimenhocker. Questions or comments? I have one. Um, is this the employee that wanted to help us hold on to the position with this kind of thing?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
I I do have a problem with that part. But uh that's probably a different section. Um.
This is only for this school year?
Yeah, it says, yeah. Roll call.
Um, Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Miss Zinchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Dr. Krug?
Yeah.
Mrs. Krug?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Shell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It is.
Special ed teacher. Be it resolved, the Board of Education hires. Then Diane Smith as a special education teacher at step one, starting salary at thirty-six thousand, beginning the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Oh, I need my.
First, Miss Jen Zentchak.
I'm sorry.
Second, Miss Danielle Hubers. Did I write that you?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Miss Zinchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Dr. Krug?
No.
Mrs. Krug?
No, it's the position.
Mr. Krimenhocker?
No, just on uh stop uh stopping it. Uh, motion.
Mrs. Krimenhocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mr. Shell?
Yeah.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Time council. Be it resolved, Board of Education moves to. Unize the P C C D grant money to pay for the cost associated with. Twenty-four graduate credits for Melissa Mistreney to complete guidance counselor certification. The last six. The last six credits cost will be covered as per the N C E A contract. Additionally, the P A guidance counselor license will need to be achieved by, missed restraining by the start of twenty-seven through the twenty-eight school year. And M O U will be provided. Don't they read all of them?
Uh, you kinda have to, yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twelve credits, hundred percent cost covered by P C C D grant money, eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twelve credits at a hundred percent cost covered by C C C D grant money, eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, six credits, ninety percent cost covered as per N C E A contract, two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents.
Okay, yeah, make the motion. Motion, Mrs. Daniel Hoover? I'm gonna second that, but I'm gonna, I'm going to vote, I want to make a motion to table this on one reason. Because the M O U is not provided. I would like to see the specifics of the M O U before we vote on this. It's not the person, it's not how we're doing it, it's because there is no M O U here yet. And it's very specific, okay? So there are a few things we would like to see as a board. And if we were gonna, we wanna bring this back on the cow meeting in June with a filled-out M O U. And then we'll put this back on in June, okay? I think, is everybody do that? So I make a motion to table this, also, F, uh, item F.
Can I make one adjustment?
Yeah, sure.
If, if we are gonna table until June, can it be, um, for, for time-sensitive purposes, could it be voted on at the town?
Well, that's what I said, we're gonna bring it back to the town. Yeah, we're booked, yes. And if the cow was very early in June, so, okay? And, and, and I, and I specifically asked, uh, Laura if this was so time-sensitive, the two weeks would make a difference, and she assured us that it would not, so. Okay, so it's basically for the M O U, and that's from all of us, okay? So, um, uh, all in favor of the table?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, let's do that. By the way, we don't normally have to give a reason for a table, we wanted to do that for, uh, so you all would know. Okay?
All right, I'm due resignation. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts with regrets, resignation of Brian Smith, or Brian Smith, uh, Special Education Secretary. The effective date will be June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher?
I'm gonna.
Second, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
I'm gonna make post and advertise Special Education Secretary. Here is all the Board of Education authorizes the administration to post and advertise for a full-time twelve-month Special Education Secretary to begin immediately. Make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher?
I'll say no.
Second, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher, any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Mr. Krimenacher, thank you, I know you have to leave early, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, stop developing. Student activities.
All right, uh, any extracurricular activity contract deals? Be resolved, the Board of Education approved the following rules of extracurricular activity contract.
Honestly, I, I, we all have it, we all have it on your thing. It was a mess to read. Yeah. If you wanted. It is.
Uh, so, all right, I'll win that.
Motion, Mr. Mike Basil? Who did that? Mr. Daniel Hoover seconded, any questions or comments? I'm sorry. I saw Daniel's hand, so. Okay, anyone have, uh, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
That's eight, nothing. Uh, is that it, Mike? Okay, transportation.
Eight, nine, four, three, one, be resolved, the Board of Education, period, later, as advisor for Northern Camry School District. If his appearances are, I'll make that motion.
All kosher?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. Motion, Miss, Mrs. Daniel Hoover, second, Mrs. Carol Lee? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Athletics.
Nothing at this time.
All right, payment of bills, be resolved, the payment of bills for the month of May, two thousand twenty-four, be approved as presented or amended, received and filed. Mission of Mrs. Carol Lee?
What's that?
Second, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher, anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, let's discuss the items that's on the agenda, mine is the one for, um, the guidance counselor. We'll put that onto a vote in the cow meeting in June. Uh, as long as we have the M O U, okay? Yes, Jen?
I would like to form the negotiating, putting your delta Sonics contract, we have a same position that would also approved, negotiated, and I'd like to tell the committee, any negotiations possible?
Okay. Do you want me to appoint people for that? Would the board like to do that?
Uh, I'd like to.
Okay.
And then.
And then the personnel should be there, and then me as de facto. And then, uh, we should probably have another one. I get the whole board wanna be there?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have the whole board there. Okay? I'll just do that, I'll send out an, an invitation to the entire board, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, go ahead, PJ.
Uh, I would like to, um, have permission to go into negotiations with the Northern Camry Recommission, uh, for the use of softball baseball field, so that there isn't an entire mess coming into the next year placed on there, uh, for us to vote on that. Um, I'd also like to have, uh, placed on the correct cow for me to have permission to reach out to, um, Rosebud Mining, to, to discuss, uh, some sponsorship opportunities that hopefully, like people. And then the last statement, uh, I just wanted the public to be aware of, of, uh, my vote might have been misstrued for Laura's contract. Uh, my vote is strictly for the verbiage in the contract, I'm fine with the issue that she doesn't work for.
All right, PJ, for the negotiations with the rec, I'll put it on for discussion for the cow, but since it's not that time-sensitive, we'll move that vote to the regular meeting.
That's, that's fine, but I mean, it's always, seems like it creeps up on us, and we have it to do.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mike.
Did we ever get certification on that solar thing for the school that, then, uh, the gentleman that came here to oppose that we? I know psychological. Imagine there was some great, I don't know if we ever got a hundred percent clarification on that, because they said they could have, uh, offset our electric bill, that one hundred.
I couldn't, let's, let's put that on to ask them. I'll put that on to ask.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
Ask about solar.
All right, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? All right, be resolved, the regular meeting of the Northern Camry School Board for May twenty-one, two thousand twenty, be adjourned at eight fifty, ten PM. Um, I guess Carol was in a hurry to do that, so we'll do that as a, as a motion, and Nora's gonna motion the second one. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Anyone opposed? The PT.